Nineteen present, five absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a quorum. First, I'm hearing myself Mac over there. Our first order is item number one, presented by Commissioner Calton and myself, resolution to consider amendments to the Sullivan County zoning plan. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number one. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? I thought he was missing one there. That's not a good sign. We had one last seat up in these resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Nineteen yes, five absent.
Having received the necessary majority of votes cast, item number one is adopted. Will stand in recess for the purpose of hearing the amendments, the zoning amendments. Mrs. Thorbitt, if you're... What happened to Mrs. Thorbitt? Mrs. Thorbitt, you're recognized on amendment number one.
Wonderful. So hopefully you've had all this email to you, but I was just visiting. And then I should have been passing the mail. Okay. So this case went to the Sullivan County Planning Commission last month. Mr. Wildin is here. This, sorry, I'm not around. This is on Highway 75, and he would like to rezone the property to be three. Currently, there you go. On the right-hand side, you see the zoning map. The left-hand side are laners playing that. And the parcel with the black arrow, you can see it's on R3A, which is for medium-density residential. The front parcels are already zoned V3. Next slide, please. There are the pictures of the property. It is adjacent to other established commercial businesses. He would like to combine the lots so they would all be V3 instead of split zone. So that is the survey, the way it looks now. And you can see it has a pipe stem, and the back half is all R3A up on the hill. The next slide. It would be combined, so the hillside would be combined with the highway frontage, basically make it more marketable to sell and not have that split zoning. So that's it. The upper strip that he also owns will remain R3A. The other sides have already been rezoned. We did not receive any opposition, and the planning commission forwards available recommendations to you all.
You've heard the explanation from Mrs. Thorbitt. Any questions from Mrs. Thorbitt about the amendment to the zoning? Mrs. Thorbitt, anyone here from public wish to address the zoning?
Well, the applicant is here. I don't know of anyone else. That's it.
If there's no objections, everybody ready to vote on the amendment? Objection, please cast your vote on the amendment when the board opens. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Nineteen yes, five absent.
Having received the necessary majority of votes cast, amendment is adopted. Does Thorbitt have anything else you want?
That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Without objection, the zoning course of the agenda is closed. That brings us back to our regular work session calendar, and I've been asked to recognize... That's item two. Is that correct, Commissioner Vanover? So for the purpose of the school board has a need to get to, I will recognize Commissioner Vanover on item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Proten. Item number two is an amendment that's been sent over from the school department. I'd like to ask you to consider this for our next meeting, and we'll be asking for waiver rules to vote on this at our next meeting. But to read the resolution, it's proposed a revised budget for the general purpose school fund for the 24-25 budget. Whereas during the budget process of 24-25, many increases in expenditures were recognized. Whereas increases in expenditures for a 15% raise for all employees were recognized totaling $8,529,606.76. And whereas other increases in expenditures for employee step increases, health insurance premiums, dental insurance premiums, utility costs, liability insurance premiums, and AED replacements, to just to name a few, were also recognized. Whereas due to the drop in student enrollment, local revenue projections were also decreased in an amount of $1,326,428, and that's due to decrease in students, due to a decrease in population. And because of the city-county split, that's just the way that happened. Whereas all these increases in expenditures and decreases in revenues create a gap of $10,545, $10,545,423 in expenditures over revenues. And whereas the Board of Education began efforts to decrease expenditures through elimination of expenditures that were not necessary and eliminate positions to attrition. And whereas after recognizing additional funding through the TISA formula and diligently lowering expenditures, the gap was narrowed to $6,854,565. Whereas after receiving the commission's vote declining the original budget request, the Board of Education met on August 7th, '24 to discuss revising said proposed budget. And whereas said meeting resulted in the following motions. The Board unanimously approved to give each employee a 15% raise with the administrators' increase being reduced to 15% of the equivalent degree and experience on the teacher's salary scale instead of the administrator's salary scale. This resulted in savings of approximately $150,000. Number two, since this proposal was utilizing undesignated fund balance to balance revenues and expenditures, it was agreed that only the amount needed to balance would be taken from the undesignated fund balance. Any unused funds would remain in the undesignated fund balance. It was also noted that history has shown that funds were added to the fund balance through years past budgets by utilizing conservative spending practices and fiscally sound operations. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Sullivan County, Tennessee, assembled a regular session, hereby approves the 24-25 general purpose school fund budget utilizing $6,854,565 of fund balance, with any remaining funds returning to the undesignated fund balance. This resolution shall take effect from and after its passage. All resolutions in conflict here in B and the same percentage insofar as such conflicts exist. Be open to any questions.
You've heard the explanation. Anyone seek recognition on item number two? Mr. Crosswhite.
Thank you, Chairman Proten. Does this include the central office or they considered administrators or just the principals?
I'm sure it does. Well, Mr. Carter, I'm sure can speak to that, but I'm sure it needed to be pointed out a little bit more clearly in the resolution than it does, but I know the intent is for that to happen.
Yes, Mr. Crosswhite, that is correct. Central office staff, there are two different groups there, those that are certified and have the degrees, and those that are non-degrees. So there will be a little difference there. It's all on the teacher.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, you're a lovely state. I'm sure there'll be other questions for you, sir. Commissioner Aker, you're a good answer.
Thank you, Chairman Proten. This is not a question for Mr. Carter, but thank you for all the work you've done. The next meeting, so let's clarify which meeting that's going to be.
It'll be the call meeting tomorrow morning at 10:00.
Okay. We'll make sure we understand, everyone understands what that meeting is and everything.
Commissioner Ward.
So we have a call meeting tomorrow at 10:00.
Yes, sir, we do.
For all of us Americans that work for a living, why can we not do this next Thursday and have a regular session?
Chairman is...
We're running out of time.
Commissioner Vanover, you're free to respond, sir.
Chairman of the commission sets the dates for the call meetings, and he's advertised it properly. And I think the thinking is just to try to get it behind us and let the school system move on and...
Let's rock and roll tonight.
We'd have to defer to County Attorney Street on that, but I don't think that's within the realm of possibility.
I'm going to recognize you, Attorney Street. Then I'm going to recognize Commissioner Aker after that.
You're one to know whether you can pass this resolution tonight.
Sure.
Well, here, we can suspend the rules. Well, I think it's a notice-type question, and this is just my opinion. I've always understood this meeting to be a work session, and that's it. Commissioners have made a statement many times that we can't amend in this meeting. We can't do anything. We don't take action in this meeting. And so I believe that we have communicated to the public that we don't take action in this meeting. And so I think if you were to take action, I think you would expose yourself to being challenged, being criticized, and I think there's a possibility that a judge could put that aside.
Wouldn't be difficult, but...
Well, damn.
I'm not sure why you just can't wait until next Thursday. It's one of the times, don't you?
I think we can maybe defer to Mr. Carter in that I think there may be some payroll that could be disruptive if things aren't being done quickly.
That is probably the number-one issue is payroll and the time that it takes to get all this work through. So I mean, what, maybe at least two or three weeks for Mr. Zale to get that accomplished, or what do you think?
We've already pushed it beyond the deadline, so I don't know that waiting a week's going to hurt.
We could, if we needed to, I guess. I'm not going to be here pushing.
Before I recognize him, I'm going to recognize Mr. Bailey.
If you delay a week, most likely would interrupt a payroll period that they would not get the raise. Delay it another payroll period. That's the way I see it.
That it, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Aker, thank Commissioner Irson.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I am worried about tomorrow's meeting to have enough people here. I've tried to rearrange my schedule so that I could be here, and so I'll do everything I can. But I'm also under the, I mean, I'm not a lawyer. I mean, we're going to get criticized no matter what we do, so if we voted on it tonight, it's just whether you like it or not, they're going to criticize us. We changed this meeting to vote for zoning, and I mean, I'm willing to vote to suspend the rules and then have a vote. And then if someone doesn't like it, I mean, I guess we bill that. But I do think, you know, here's where we, if we don't have enough members tomorrow, then we'll have to push it to Thursday, you know, and everything. And it is hard to do call meetings during the day, like Commissioner Ward said, but I have rearranged my schedule to try to make sure to be here and everything, so there's always got to be a first vote for something, you know?
Commissioner Irson, did you mean to turn your mic off?
Commissioner Locke.
Thank you, Chair. We changed the meeting times in 18 when we came in here. Majority of us did. It's still remaining from morning meetings to 6:00 p.m. so the public and also us can meet and have a forum. So since we vote on zoning, like Aker said, I think it's... I'll let Dan listen as well. I think since we vote on zoning, I think it's necessary that we can suspend the rules and vote on this tonight. Because if we come in here tonight or tomorrow and don't have a forum, then we're pushing it and pushing it and pushing it. So I don't see any wrongdoing, even if it has to go to court, if we suspend the rules, suspend the rules, suspend the rules. And I'd like to make that motion to take the vote on it tonight.
I mean, go ahead, Tom.
We published it. I'll second. And it's in the paper, and the public's been noticed about it through the clerk's office, and I think it's, we meet the criteria.
I'm going to recognize Attorney Street.
Well, I thought I was called on. I mean, my opinion is the same. We do zoning. You're correct. But we've never done anything more than that. We don't even consider this meeting to be first reading. Anything that's read tonight, when it comes on next Thursday, it's still first reading. I mean, we've never taken any action in this meeting. So what I'm saying is it's not a question about suspending the rules. It's a question about notice to the public about these meetings. You could very well have people say they don't come to these meetings because you don't do anything. That's why they don't come. If you all of a sudden take action, then you raise the possibility they're going to complain.
The public notice has been met, and it's been published by Teresa.
I mean, I agree with that. In fact, if I'm not wrong, I think I was the one that told Teresa to make sure she runs notice of these meetings, because we do zoning, for example. But nonetheless, from the beginning, work session has never taken any action. I mean, just think, how many of you have heard the comment in this body that we don't take any action in this meeting? You can't even amend. If anybody says, "Well, I want to amend," somebody always says, "Well, you can't do that. You have to wait for the next meeting."
We can't amend this resolution anyway. It's coming from this Board of Education.
Well, I'm using that as an example. All I'm saying is I don't think you've provided proper notice that you're going to take action on a resolution tonight.
Commissioner Slague, I want to recognize you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a procedural question. Is there a reason we skipped over public comment, or are we doing that?
For the purpose of hearing, that they have to get to their board meeting. I'm going to go back. I'm going to go back to public comment, but we hit this resolution for the purpose of them getting to their main...
Thanks, sir.
I've got a motion on the board.
You do. You do. In the opinion of Attorney Street, is the motion in order? We have a proper motion and a proper second motion by Locke, second by Aker. And the motion is to suspend the rules.
For this one resolution.
For this one resolution. That requires 16 votes to suspend the rules. And Commissioner Vanover, you'll be presenting that resolution after, correct? And that would then require 13 votes for passage.
Like I said, I don't have any problem with that. I'm sure the school board would like to get on with this as soon as possible. I don't feel comfortable going against the county attorney's advice, but if that's the will of the commission, then that's what we'll do.
Are we, we're probably not able to put that on the board. It requires the voice of the world call. Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner McMurray.
Thank you, Chairman. I just don't understand why we got to try to push this through in this procedural way. I think the notice that we sent out was for tomorrow at 10:00. I'll be here. I'll make arrangements. I'll make sure I'll be here. And I can even tell you, I'm glad that the school board did this, and I'm in favor of it. But I'm not in favor of us just breaking protocol in this precedent that we're going to set by just passing a resolution today. And I concur a lot with what Attorney Street has said. We could really wind up in a bad spot if we try to push this through today. But I mean, I don't agree with this procedure, but I agree with the resolution.
Anyone else, excuse me, anyone else seek recognition on the motion? There's no objection. Madam Clerk, call roll, and the motion is to suspend the rules requiring 16 votes for passage.
Aker?
Yes.
Calton?
Yes.
Carr?
No.
Cole?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Crawford? Absent. Cross? Absent. Crosswhite?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Klepper?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Hayes?
No.
Horn?
Yes.
Irson?
Yes.
Jones? Absent. King? Absent. Leonard?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
McMurray? Nees? Absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Slavel?
No.
Stidham?
No.
Vanover?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Twelve yes, seven no, five absent.
Having failed to receive the necessary majority, motion to suspend fails. Commissioner Vanover, you're recognized, sir.
So as I understand it, as we'll go forward with this meeting tomorrow at 10:00 o'clock in a call meeting, I think now is time for more discussion. If anyone has discussion about the resolution itself, we got the experts in the building, so now's the time for discussion.
Commissioner Irson then Commissioner McMurray. Commissioner Irson.
Question first before I make a comment. But so since Attorney Street said this can't be a first reading tonight, then tomorrow morning will be a first reading, which would require 16 votes to pass if it happens tomorrow.
It would require a waiver rule for 16 votes.
And if we don't have enough, if we don't have 13, it won't even be first reading.
If we don't have a quorum, we can't have a meeting, and the resolution needs 16 votes to pass. You're correct, sir.
Just wanted to make sure that we all were on the same page in what's going on. I'm just going to say a couple things. I'd like to address some things that happened last night, some personal things last night, but I'm not going to. So let's skip over that. There were two things last night that were said that I really think that we all, I think, I just want to make sure everybody understands where it's at. So I heard mention of a law not a veto, and that is very specific, meaning that you pass a bill, but you take out one portion of it. And that didn't happen. This is something I voted down. And that's, you know, several of us have told issues with the proposal, and I really just want to say thank you to the school system for actually going forward and making some changes. The other comment that was made was micromanagement, and I actually think it's reversed. I think it's macro management's what we do. We actually look at the general budget of a lot of different departments and look at it from a bird's eye view and take it and see what we can afford, what we can't. So I think it's the farthest from micromanagement. When something doesn't pass or whenever we need someone to do something different, we've done it to every department in the entire county. It's, yes, we're for this. No, we're not for this. And we tell them what the reason that we can't support it. And that's kind of, I think, what happened. I would like to thank the commission. I mean, they had the courage to say no last time. And I think that because of that, it wasn't easy, but it was something that had to be done. And because of that, the school system, they've made some changes. And again, I appreciate them making those changes. I think it's a tough job, and it is our job. That is what we're here for. And the difference between the proposal they brought and the one they brought tonight's $1.1 million, I heard Chuck and several of BOE members say that their, this proposal is sustainable. And I'm going to support it.
Commissioner McMurray, did you catch your mic, officer?
I just have one question.
Okay. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Carter, then I'll recognize...
You want to ask your question?
You don't mind?
I don't mind.
Commissioner McMurray.
I just have one question. It was brought up earlier. You were talking about everybody at the central office. So does that mean, what about like the staff there, like your secretaries?
Okay, those within the support staff, 15%, they have their...
They're 15%.
Absolutely.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for Attorney Street. Is there any way we could just move tomorrow's meeting to 6:00, so that way there's no issue of worrying?
No.
Okay.
Do it tomorrow. I don't think you could probably do it today. Now, well, let me think a minute. Let me think a minute. So let's say tonight you made a motion to suspend the call meeting for tomorrow. I mean, I need to go read my rules, but I think you could do that. So I may, on second thought, I may have to change that. You may be able to change that set time. Let me go grab a rule book.
Entertaining motion for a 10-minute recess for Attorney Street to get his rule book. All those in favor, 10-minute recess, aye?
Aye.
Recession's 10 minutes.
Recession's ten minutes. Work session is back, in session, recognize Attorney Street for explanation. Attorney Street.
To be, to be consistent, this is the work session, so if you adjourn the work session when you reconvene, you're still going to be a work session. To call the county commission into session when you can take action requires five days' notice, and you have to give your purposes for meeting, which you can easily do, but it still takes five days. Now, you have a call meeting already scheduled, properly scheduled for tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. At that one time, you can adjourn that meeting to any time you want to, but you can't just tonight call a meeting unless you give five days' notice, and I'm not even sure, I think the mayor has to do that, you can ask the mayor, and the law says he has to do it, or the chairman, but anyway, it still takes five days, and we're gonna meet next Thursday anyway, so wouldn't be any need to do that.
Thank you Attorney Street, recognize Commissioner Vanover for final comments on the resolution.
First of all, to have a clarification, if we have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00, will that be the first reading, and we can waive the rules and vote on it, correct?
Yes.
And it would require sixteen votes?
Yes.
Correct?
It would take sixteen votes to suspend the rules, and then it takes thirteen to pass.
But we generally merge that together into one vote. So tomorrow's meeting is a meeting that we can vote and can get this.
Yes.
Put to bed.
It is, most definitely, but. It is, this can be, this can be a, this can be finished by 10:30 tomorrow.
Okay. No other questions?
Sixteen votes, sir, you're gonna have to have sixteen votes.
We would have had sixteen tonight also, right?
What?
If we had to vote it tonight, if we could have voted, we would have had to have sixteen tonight also.
Yes. Well, I'm not sure what you're asking, here, here's, the only reason you need sixteen is because we have a standing rule that says no resolution shall be passed on first reading. That's your own rule, you can change that anytime you want to, you can eliminate it permanently, but it takes sixteen votes to change the rules.
Again, any other discussion, any?
Commissioner. Commissioner Vanover, what's your desired action on the resolution?
Vote tomorrow morning at 10:00.
Sponsor moves resolution to our next scheduled meeting, 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning here in the courthouse. Without objection, and I'd like to thank the school board members for bearing with me on that, I know y'all have a meeting to get to, and I didn't, I didn't forget public comment, I just wanted to accommodate them so that they could get to their meeting, because I knew that'd be a little bit of a discussion. So at this time, we'll go into recess for the purpose of public, public comment, and we have a public comment sheet up there, if someone signed up for public comment. If anyone would like to, to speak to the commission, feel free to sign the comment sheet, or you can, you can come up when I call you. But, but before I start recognizing people off the list, I want to take a moment of personal privilege, I'd like to introduce a friend of the commission, the newly elected mayor of Kingsport, our good friend, Mr. Paul Montgomery, Mayor-elect Montgomery, if you would come to the well and say hello to us. Mayor-elect Montgomery.
Good evening commissioners, and thank you for recognizing me this evening. I am honored, humbled, and counted privileged to be serving as next mayor of Kingsport. I also find it a privilege to be working with you as county commissioners to make this southern county a better place for all of us. If I can be of service to you going forward, please do ahead, stay, call on me, and again, I look forward to working with you, thank you.
Thank you, happy to have you here with us. Is there anyone else that'd like to sign the public comment sheet that hasn't? The first person on our list, if you will, please introduce yourself, give us your address, and this is, again, this is not question and answer, this is our time to hear from you, and I'd like to call, excuse, excuse me if I mispronounce your first name, Lakey? I did it right?
Lakey, perfect.
Lakey Derrick, you're recognized, thank you.
Hey, hi everyone, my name's Lakey Derrick, I'm 22 years old, and I'm a lifelong resident of Sullivan County. I would just like to start out by saying that I love my county, but I'm left very frustrated by the recent events regarding the 15% pay increase for teachers in Sullivan County. I would like to make abundantly clear that I support teachers and pay raises, but we cannot forget our responsibility to fiscal conservatism. I was first concerned when I saw this result in a 32 cent tax increase at the beginning, then I was left more concerned by the now-approved 9 cent tax increase, as well as taking money from the fund balance to pay this new salary. Not only was this an unsustainable source of payment, but I'm left confused as to why there was an approved tax increase on the residents of Sullivan County, given the state of the economy. More than that, though, there is nothing conservative about more taxes, because more taxes means bigger government, and bigger government needs less freedom. So while I was looking into these tax increases, I could not help but notice how once the correct people on the school board accepted and recognized there was no sustainability in their proposed plan, and when the people pushing for said plan lost their school board races, there was no hesitation in the school board's ability to find 2.8 million dollars in their operational funds, which will now provide for the 15% pay raises for teachers instead of a tax increase on current county residents. Clearly, this entire debacle proves that this raise was never about caring for and supporting our teachers who work hard to help the children of this area. If it were, the school board would propose using the 2.8 million dollars of their funds to do so, not push for a tax increase, which would also create heavier tax burdens on the school teachers. And for those who perpetuated the idea that they did not care where the money for the pay raise came from so long as the raise was received, that is a social, that is socialist thinking, and I'm asking you to revisit the idea that taxation is theft by looking back at U.S. history and studying the Boston Tea Party. I want to thank every commissioner who stood firm in the face of adversity and voted no to the undue tax burden, and stood up for your residents, and stood up for capital T, truth, and God bless you for that. Finally, I would just like to say that we live in one of the most conservative counties in Tennessee, if not one of the most conservative counties in the entire country. There is no place for establishment politics here, so quit taking federal funding and start operating our area, our beloved county, how the founding fathers intended. Focus on bringing long-term jobs and new businesses here, make it so that young people like me can start families here, can start businesses here, and can live out their American dream here. The first step to doing that would be to stop voting for tax raises. I know next year property reassessments will be taking place, and everyone's taxes will skyrocket. Will you, as commissioners, commit yourself to voting for your residents and put an end to tax increases when so many of us have already lost our jobs, or were forced to work two, or sometimes three or more jobs, just to keep the lights on? Will you stand up for the senior citizens of Sullivan County who live on fixed income, whose monthly expenses cannot withstand inflation and continuous tax hikes? Stand up for us, or sit down at home, because you will be primaried out.
Ms. Derrick, is it okay if I enter your address as 642 Trevor Grimes?
Yes, sir.
642. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodney Page. Name and address. Social Security number.
All right, so obviously my name's Rodney, I have 11, 25, I've got my children in Tennessee. For the people that listened to me last night, apologize, you can hear a lot of the same things, I did not think I could make it tonight, but I got appropriate, so I want to, as previous speaker mentioned, inflation rates and all these good things, I'm gonna kind of go down that road. I'm gonna kind of give you some information here, coupling inflation rates with teacher salary increases over the past few years. While nobody loves to raise taxes, our teachers are your employees and the school board's employees, and the school board does get their money through taxes, so it is just what it is. In 2016, the annual inflation rate was 2.1%, teachers got 2%. In 2017, it's 2.1%, teachers got 2%. 2018, it's 1.9%, teachers got 2%. 20, sorry, 2019, it was 2.3%, teachers got 2%. 2020, it's 1.4%, teachers got 2%. In 2021, it was 7%, teachers got 8.5%. In 2022, it was 6.5%, teachers got 1%. 2023, it was 3.4%, and teachers got 3.5%. The raises they have been getting have barely, if even, been keeping up with inflation rates. Yet, again, I've mentioned this before, we've raised county employee salaries 5% for the past five years, and the difference is, we've been willing to go and tax the public for that, whereas the school system, we have been unwilling to do so. As far as total amounts of property tax revenue going to the school system, when I hear people say that we were basically raking the taxpayers to take care of schools, go back and look at the numbers, 2016 and 2017, we were putting 26.6 million dollars a year of property tax revenue into the school system, last year we did 17.05 million. It is what it is. Since they adjusted the tax levy three years ago, the county general fund has went from 72.88 cents to 94.985 cents. Each penny, I think, is worth $406,000 now, so that's about an 8.7 million dollar per year difference that you guys are getting in your general fund. So the waste has went from 1.77 cents to now 5.77 cents. That's a pretty significant increase. Highway department has went from 6.75 cents to 8.75 cents, which means it's getting about $800,000 more than it's 2.8 million it got last year. The general purpose school fund has decreased from $1.17 to 98 cents. So about a 19 cent difference, which equates to around 7.7 million dollars. Yes, sales tax revenue went up, and we pumped that in to take care of the property tax we took away, but we disregarded some promises that were made back when the pinnacle was developed, and we also seem to think that every department in this county needs extra money for raises, or extra money for gas, or extra money for equipment, yet the school system does not suffer with those same inflated costs or needs. And as far as your teachers go, this is not about making a minimum amount, thank you, I'm sorry, I'll take 15 more seconds. This raise has never been about meeting the $50,000 minimum in three years, this raise is about the fact that we are losing teachers to three city systems, 20 teachers a year, and it's usually our hiring teachers, our physics, our chemistry, our math teachers, our algebraists. It is a, it is a need, in my opinion, obviously I'm biased, but in my opinion, it's a need, and it's time that the county stepped up, we have not had a property tax raise related to schools in seven years.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Anyone else seek recognition for public comment? Without objection, the public comment portion of the agenda is closed. That brings us back to our regularly scheduled agenda, review of resolutions. That brings us back to our regularly scheduled agenda, review of resolutions. Recognize Commissioner Vanover on item number one.
Resolution is to approve vacating and quit claiming Bird Street to Bloomingdale Utility District. Make this real quick, it's a road that's no longer being used. It's beside of Bloomingdale Utility District. They're own property on both sides of the road. They're going to do some demolition on old houses that were there to try to make a bigger facility for them to park equipment and store equipment. So the road is no longer used. Bloomingdale Utility owns both sides of the road, so they're wanting to vacate the road and quit claiming it to the utility district.
You've heard the explanation. Anyone seek recognition for questions or comments on item number one? Commissioner Vanover?
I'd like to ask this to be put on consent and vote on it next week, or tonight. We can vote on this tonight, anyway.
If you put it on consent, sponsor moves consent?
Waiver rules, I'm sorry.
You want to vote on it next week on waiver of rules, or you want to put on consent calendar tonight? Sponsor moves consent on item number one. Any objection? Item number one being placed on consent counter. Without objection, item number one is placed on consent counter. Recognize Commissioner Vanover on item number two.
I'll try to do better this time.
All right, that was practice.
Item number two is a resolution to approve vacating and quit claiming access right away to Frank and Tammy Cannon, homeowners of 397 on Linger Drive. Been out there, the road kind of bends around their property that's hard to maintain. I'm sure Amber has done all the legal works on this, and there's no opposition I know of, so I'd like to ask this to be on the consent counter, please.
You've heard the explanation. Sponsor moves consent on item number two. Is there any objection to item number two being placed on consent counter? Without objection, item number two is placed on consent counter. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Locke on item number three.
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution is to approve policy for acceptance of partial payments of property taxes in the office of Sullivan County trustee. I ask this to be put on consent. Any questions?
You've heard the explanation on item number three. Any questions, comments on item number three? Sponsor moves consent count. Commissioner Stedham?
I'm not, just getting ready for the next one.
Oh, we haven't moved on to the next one yet, have we?
Getting ready, head of the game.
Sponsor moves consent counter on item number three. Any objection to item number three being placed on consent counter? Without objection, item number three is placed on consent counter. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Stedham on item number four.
Thank you, Mr. O'Tent. This resolution is endorsing the use of visual camera surveillances and enhance law enforcement in Southern County. We have Mr. Kennedy back here to explain any questions you may have on it. The first year, we'll be using money out of the drug fund, so there won't be any money coming on this budget year. Next year, we'll be looking at in '25, '26, an amount of $30,000. This is a public safety issue that really can enhance us here in Sullivan County. One day, we may have a child abduction, and we may be able to head it off before they get anywhere. The surveillance cameras, Mr. Ward could probably attest to it, is state of the art. These type cameras are even used at Lowe's and whatnot where that. But they can track any vehicle by model, color, or tag. It's pretty amazing. $30,000 for going towards public safety, I think is a good deal. If you have any technical questions, you need to talk to Mr. Kennedy back there.
You've heard the explanation. Recognize Commissioner Irison on resolution number four.
I guess I'm trying to think, so tell me more about, is there a lot of cameras? How many cameras? What are they actually built?
It takes pictures of tags, vehicles. If you, they plug it in, they're looking for a red Ford pickup. Every red Ford pickup will hit on your tags.
So this isn't red light cams? It's not speeding cams? It's not going to do any of that, too? So what's it doing? Is that pretty much what it is?
No, what it is, so we placed 10 cameras around Sullivan County. It has nothing to do with red light tickets. It doesn't track speed, and it doesn't take any parking violation, anything like that. So all it is, is basically used for investigative purposes. So like, if we get an amber alert, silver alert, or anything like that, we'll be able to track a vehicle leaving out of our county. The good thing about this is, we can connect the systems, Kingsport, Carter County, Johnson County, Johnson City, all the Lowe's locations. Once we get into this system, we can use our cameras to try to access this, and we have used this to settle investigative leads, track the suspects across the state and across the eastern seaboard.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Horn, then Commissioner Carr.
Thank you, Chairman. Kingsport already has these, like Richard said, and they are awesome. They're fantastic. The officers, they're very handy. The officers can input the information themselves, or Central Dispatch can do it, but, so it can be input as soon as a crime is committed, or anytime you get the information on the vehicle, we put that in there, and sometimes before they're even out in the area, we're getting flawed notifications, and can apprehend suspects that way. So they are a very, very good tool to have.
Commissioner Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So can we use these cameras to track people that are bringing fentanyl into our areas?
So on the drug side of it, we can track when we have, when our guys go out, we track dealers bringing stuff back into Sullivan County. All of our cameras can be pointed into the county, so we're going to be able to track when they come back into the county, so yeah. So a lot of that, like when they come out of Atlanta, we will start the LPR down in Atlanta, and we'll come through Chattanooga, and we'll just keep tracking them all the way up the interstate.
Nice, nice. And are there, do you know if Kingsport City already has some of these cameras in the Lynn Garden area?
Yes.
What are you worried about, Joe? Looks like someone's got a new client down there.
Okay. Commissioner Slagle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't know if I can call that, Joe.
No, I hope you don't.
So software costs associated here, is this just hardware? Is this hardware and software? I assume there's software that goes with this that helps?
This is, they complete all the maintenance, so $30,000 a year is for maintenance.
Hardware and software. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Vanover.
How would you choose the location of where to put these cameras?
We chose them by high crime areas, and we put a lot on the main roads, the thoroughfares and out of the county, so how somebody would expel from a particular county.
Are they hardwired and permanently installed? They can't be moved from one place to another, right?
The company can do it, but yes, they are hardwired in, but we have to get in contact with the company, but we can relocate them if needed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stedham?
I'd like to put this on waiver of rules. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sponsor moves waiver of rule, take this up at our next, it's good, next meeting next Thursday. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Stedham on item number five.
This resolution is to go into agreement to purchase tasers. We have Mr. Kennedy here, I'm sure there may be some questions on this one tonight. Our contract is actually up, I guess, and so we're going to be needing to get this done as quickly as possible. So if you have any technical questions, we have Mr. Kennedy here can answer those questions. And there has been a substantial increase in the cost of these since the last time we did a contract on them.
You've heard the explanation. Recognize Commissioner Aker.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, Gary, we're not going to have a demonstration, but we haven't passed?
Well, if you get Joe, we could borrow him one.
I think Joe's going to volunteer for that.
It's Joe Knight.
Commissioner Butler.
Mr. President, Gary, you just can say that we've known for a little while that the, that we were running out of the agreement on these. How come none of this was run through the budget committee?
It actually did go to budget. Budget looked at it during the thing, wanted more information, and it was kicked back. That was my understanding on it.
I mean, he can't drive on the budget, we just done, and now we're getting to spend $309,000 there. I mean, it's $47,383.94 for the first year, $65,313.36 for the four remaining fiscal years, totaling $308,637.38. With that kind of money, that should have been run through. I don't understand why it wasn't in the first budget for this past year.
I can answer that.
Mr. Kennedy?
So we did bring this through, I actually sent it to Mr. Bailey's office before the budget was passed. We didn't get these numbers and enough time to do it in our initial request, because our contract ended in June, along with all the other counties that do Axon, so we kept fighting to get our quote. We finally got our quote back, and when we did, we immediately pushed it over, but it was already at that time, it was at the early part of June, when we finally got our quote back from Axon. We sent it over, it was at that point in time, I think, delivered to me from Mr. Bailey's office, that you guys were taking the budgets directly from the admin committee, and what they approved not what was coming in real time. So I think that's the reason why it may not have been fully discussed, because this budget brought up before. Like, I wasn't trying to avoid the budget, we wanted this in our budget request. So it was brought up, yes.
Attorney Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I've mentioned this before, one time many years ago, a commissioner challenged a resolution because the source of funding was not provided, and had a rule in his favor, and it was a big deal back then. This resolution says the county, Sullivan County Sheriff's Office will be requesting additional funding in fiscal year '24, '25 of $24,000. I'm not sure what that means, but it needs to be clarified, and it also needs to give the source of where that money's coming from, if you're going to amend your budget.
Get that, the request be from fund balance for this year? As you can see down there, we're requesting $24,000, $103,94 from fund balance this year, and then $42,000 going forward. The reason why we're not requesting the total amount is we've had budgeted in the past $23,000, which we're obviously going to put straight toward this contract. We're not going to move that money anywhere else, so we're going to just ask for the difference of what we've been budgeting the last five years to make this cost. I mean, it's tasers, it's something we have to have in our division, and unfortunately, we have a five-year contract, so over five years of inflation, and we're now back at it. This is the new cost for these tasers. We had the selection, and we picked the Taser Basic Seven, which is the cheapest option that's available on the market right now. So it's not like we asked for the better options, there are tasers 10s, and there's many other options. We just got the basic out there, so we can get our officers equipped with less lethal options, so everyone's not using a gun, so.
Commissioner Aker.
Yeah, I'll clarify kind of what the question is about coming through the budget, and kind of what Michael said and everything, said, it was brought up that they were working on it and trying to find out the pricing and all that, and if there were any other options. And so we just said, well, when you figure it out, bring it, we're not going to change the budget on a whim, and of course, you all know, Shane, we spent a lot of time with the school board, so, yeah, that technically came in front of the actual budget, and we were there still working on the numbers.
That clears the board, recognize Commissioner Stedham, final word on item number five.
I'll stay corrected on that. It went in front of them, it was mentioned to them, so. Are we requesting waiver of rules on this?
Commissioner Stedham requests waiver of rules, county commission meeting a week from today, next Thursday.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman.
Without objection, recognize Commissioner King on item number six.
Thank you. Let me get over here a quarter of that, I was reading something else while we were doing this. But anyway, this is to, we had a tax relief program last year, and this is just to do another year. Last year, we, I think there was 4,100 people, you can read all this in the resolution, but I think there was like 44,010 people applied for, and 3,900 unqualified. Then you can look down how it's brought down to the different types of people in the county that was dependent on this, and it's, I mean, looking at where the money is going to, it's very deserved to these people, by these people, you know, there are veterans, and the elderly that are having a hard time paying their property taxes, and this is going to help them, and I think it's a good program, it's something that is well deserved to these people, and I just think it's a good thing we need to do. So I would ask for, I had some more information on it, and I kind of got hurried to get over here, but anyway, but anyway, just put it on waiver of rules, and then we'll bring it up next week, but anyway.
You've heard the explanation on item number six. Sponsor moves waiver of rules to be heard of. County commission meeting next Thursday. Is there any questions for the sponsor on item number six? Thank you, Commissioner King.
Thank you.
Without objection, recognize Commissioner Locke on item number seven.
This resolution's for a TIF, that's for Reverend Ben Development, that's right behind Walmart on 400 Drive, 92 homes. It's going to be $1.1 million, 15-year, 40% holdback from the county. And I ask for waiver of rules on this. There will be a slideshow presentation to kind of go over the development, the layout. City of Kingsport voted on this, and they're in favor, so the developer will be here to go over some more and answer any questions next Thursday.
You've heard the explanation on item number seven. Any questions for the sponsor on item number seven?
Oh, I've got some.
You ready, Hunter?
Yes, sir. Fire on.
Commissioner King on item number seven.
I thought the TIF program was supposed to be for blighted industrial areas of the county and inner cities to take over an area and try to get something better in this place. And I get, you've got people out here that are doing developments, and do we want to give everybody in Southern County that's doing a development a TIF? And I mean, I can understand if it's, you know, a partial land that's, you know, rundown, we need to do something with it, I can understand that. I have a hard time doing it for development of housing. If it's industrial or commercial or something like that, I can understand it, but if you're not going to do the same thing with all the other developers in Sullivan County, when they come up with a subdivision, or apartment housing, or whatever it is, if we're not going to do it for everybody, then I just can't, I can't support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner King. That clears the board. Commissioner Locke, recognize you for final comment on item number seven.
I'd rather do a TIF and get it on the tax roll, have 92 homes on the tax roll that have red plain mud sitting in a hop, and it's a 40% holdback to life, and only a million dollars? To me, it's no brain. So if you want to vote no, vote no, but I'd rather have tax money coming in here to pay for these expenditures we're doing, than have nothing at all.
I got one more question.
A question on the resolution?
Yes.
Recognize Commissioner King on item number seven.
How much we got in the TIF program up there? How much we got in the TIF program right now that we're playing? How many millions?
More than ninety-four million. I'll have to look at this. So, it's ninety-four, whatever the decimal is. It used to be ninety-one, then it was ninety-four last, this year, so it's growing.
That right there, the whole question to me is, you know, how much money? How much more money can we put in helping people develop? That's, I don't know.
Commissioner Locke, recognize your final word on item number seven.
Just to put it in perspective, we did a Westgate TIF off Stone Drive, Del Walmart, when they tore it down. They put, I forget how many townhomes and single-family dwellings up there, and three-fourths of that TIF has already been paid off. This body voted on that and put it in place. And like I said, that TIF's rolled off. So, if we happened to approve that TIF, that development and those families wouldn't even be living there. It pays for itself over time. But if you don't give any incentive, you're not going to get anything. You're not going to gain anything. Same thing we happened to with City Kingsport years ago at Twenty-Six Eighty-One Interchange. They weren't players, and it went to Bristol, and they're players. And look at it, and look what it's brought. So, I mean, either we can play ball or we can not do anything at all, and I think this is a good investment. It's low-cost TIF, one million dollars for ninety-two homes, and I don't see a problem with it.
Move waiver, move waiver of rules for commission meeting next Thursday. Commissioner Locke. Sponsor moves waiver of rules for item number seven to be heard at commission meeting next Thursday. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Aker on item number eight.
Thank you, Chairman Protem. This is a resolution approving amendment to the redevelopment plan, authorizing additional TIF financing for Hudson Terrace Project and extending the term of Long Tier Parkway South Redevelopment District. As you know, the body, but mostly before everyone who's here, we voted for the TIF on the Ray State, what I call the Ray State project right across from, or the Overlook original, and now it's called the Hudson Terrace right there across from the Speedway, which, as Commissioner King said, was a very rocky, kind of blighted piece of property. And as he answered or asked a question earlier, you know, you don't pick and choose where you do TIFs. You have to have a development plan of a reason for what you're doing and where you're going and everything like that. And as you know, we passed that TIF. Everything's going great. They've got the, the front townhomes are under roof and about to be finished out, so they started, you know, marketing them and everything. That piece of property will finalize out into a hundred and fifty-some units right there. And then, as a, as a young lady talked about earlier, about, you know, new people moving in, these are, you know, kind of more affordable housing that are going up in that area and such. But as you all know, during the last few years, it's been kind of hard to get some materials, and it was discussed during the time whether or not TDOT was going to require any type of improvement to Volunteer Parkway on behalf of the developer for some turning lanes for safety and everything. Well, they finally ruled last month that yes, the developer's going to have to put in some safety and turning lanes and all that. So, as Bristol has approved it, and then we got the final stuff from the lawyers in the last couple of days, to increase and amend the TIF from the original one point seven million to two point one million and add another five years on to it, so taking it from the fifteen to the twenty. But they got started late and everything, and as y'all know, Danny Carson then do very good work and very good stewards of the information, and so not to run over our Chairman Protem, but let me have it, boy.
Commissioner, Commissioner, recognize, you've heard the explanation. Recognize Commissioner King.
But it's the same thing, you know, we're looking at a, that was a campground, I believe, for the, for the interstate drill. And they couldn't make it, so they decided to edit for themselves. So, now, you know, they just blighted, use a campground. And then they took this over, and now there's houses and condos and single-family development. So, there again, it's a resident. And I also remember that we did another one in downtown Bristol that is kind of grown over, got weeds in it, a few other things that we mentioned, but, you know, how's that going? Are we getting some money back on that?
That is not going too well. The pandemic, economics completely turned that situation upside down. You are correct, sir. So, we are actively looking for a developer to take that up and everything.
Well, as I recall, that was to help the developer raise the lot that they were going to build on so it wouldn't flood.
That is, they had to go up three feet. But that has nothing to do with this resolution?
No. There again, that might be some history that we all need to look at.
And I'm begging the developer to look at that piece of property hard and everything.
Commissioner Glover.
I guess what bothers me is the third, whereas it says, whereas a result of anticipated cost and material shortages, including higher than anticipated utility material costs, the developer requested an increase in the amount of TIF financing from one point seven million to up to two point one million and an extension of the term of TIF financing from fifteen to twenty years and to allow for one additional year of construction due to the construction delay caused by increased material costs and shortages. That's the problem I have with this, but if we go back and redo something like this, that's out of our control. That's something that we couldn't control. We couldn't help, and I'm sure he couldn't neither, but he brought a plan in, you presented it to us, and we voted on it and look forward with it. And we awarded that amount for what he asked for, and that's really not our problem of this increase. That would be the, in my opinion, the responsibility of the developer itself.
You, we all have our educated opinions, and I can tell you where a lot of that came from, and it's happening all over the South right now. And it is a backlog of transformers that were used to costing everyone around fifteen-hundred dollars that are on three- and four- and five-year delays that are costing upwards of over ten thousand dollars now and everything. And so, yes, as a non-developer, I have learned more about development the last few years than I've ever thought of in my life. Thank you.
Commissioner Slagle.
Commissioner Aker, would it be within the scope of the resolution to add some information to clarify for Commissioner Glover regarding the TDOT requirement for this? That way, we're not setting a precedent for increased material costs specifically, yet we're following a statement they received.
Not a problem. That clears the board. Commissioner Aker, give me final word on resolutions.
Yep.
Commissioner Aker moves waiver of rules to be taken up at our scheduled County Commission meeting next Thursday. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Cole on item number nine. Sponsor is Commissioner Crossford. Cole, recognize Commissioner Cole for that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to receive a grant of fifteen thousand, five thirty-four through the Tennessee Library and Archives for the WAPA HOP SPAW equipment connections and upgrades, technology upgrades. I stumbled there because I looked at the body. Now they're being resolved. The one, the one needs to be taken out into the fifteen thousand number. I'm not sure that's correct before Thursday. And I'd like to put that on consent if we don't have any questions on that.
You've heard the explanation. Sponsor moves consent counter for item number nine. Depending on the correction. Commissioner Aker seeks recognition. Recognize Commissioner Aker.
I'm trying to find a resolution. I know we always try to do resolutions by resolution number two zero two four dash zero eight dash zero two, but, you know, sometimes I think it might be appropriate to name and everything, and so if sponsor bent over, we'll use a comment on resolution number twenty-two four dash oh eight dash oh two, resolution proposing revised budget proposal for the general purpose school fund for twenty-two, twenty-five budget. I know Commissioner Glover has worked years to try and get the support staff the raises that they deserve and everything, and, you know, this resolution could be in honor of Herschel Lee Glover, Senior Commissioner.
We have it. Recognize Commissioner Cole on item number nine. You move consent counter for item number nine. Sponsor moves consent counter for item number nine. Anyone object to item number nine being placed on consent counter? Without objection, item number nine is placed on consent counter. Just a quick, just a quick review. That takes us to the end of our review of resolutions. A quick review, if I'm not mistaken, items one, two, three, and nine are on the consent counter, and everything else is on waiver of rules to be heard at our next commission meeting next Thursday. And we have, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Glover.
This question's for Attorney Street. On the, on the vote on the resolution for the school, would you clarify something for me? Is a, is a teacher considered as a county employee or not? The reason I'm asking that is, is we need to verify some of this conflict of interest stuff. Is, if somebody is, if you vote on that resolution tomorrow, and you have a relative or a wife or a sister or somebody working at the school department, and you vote on that, is that a conflict of interest or not? That's my question. Is a, is a teacher considered a county employee?
Well, I don't know that I can answer that right off the top of my head. I will talk about it in a second. Many years ago, the school board was pretty much hooked at the hip to the county, but a divide was recognized and continues to get further apart. Now, it's pretty much accepted law that the school board is independent from the county. I just read a case just this week, I believe it was, where the suit was actually against the school board. The county moved to get out, and the trial judge said that the county was in it because there's only one county, and he went to Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals reversed and let the county out, but made the school board stay by itself, which clearly establishes that the school board is an independent entity. Now, on the other hand, all county teachers, I believe, I stand to be corrected, are paid with Southern County payroll checks. All their records are kept over here in payroll. They're considered to be county employees. I mean, even, and again, you know, I'm not, it's a good question. I see where you're going with that. Even our most recent Financial Private Act merged all the accounting over there, which maybe even calls into question whether the school board is in Southern County, really is all that independent. So, I guess if I had to give an answer at this point in time, I'd say that, yes, they are county employees. However, I mean, the case law is clearly recognizing that the school board is an independent entity. It's just a gray area, but to answer the question right now, I would say that school board employees are county employees, yes.
I just wanted to verify that to make sure, because I had been asked, and I've been, you know, asked to try to get an answer.
Well, let me go ahead and talk about what I understood you were getting to on that. The law says that commissioners cannot vote on anything that affects their salary or their spouse's salary. So, I would assume, and I'm glad you brought that up now, so we can all think about it now instead of hitting me with that off the cuff tomorrow, and I'm not being prepared. I would say that that would apply. The law says that the commissioners can vote on the whole budget, but if any amendment or sole resolutions are brought up affecting pay of themselves or their spouse, they can't. Now, it says, I have to read it, but it says you have to challenge their vote immediately. If they vote and it's not challenged before the next, before you adjourn or the next business, then it's too late. You can't challenge it after that, which really takes a lot of the sting out of it. Let's see, there was one other thing I wanted to mention. Oh, if they say that they are not going to vote because of that law, then the number of eligible votes goes down. So, like, for example, the law says that you have to have a majority of however many seats are full in the county commission. That's why we always have to have thirteen. It doesn't matter whether there's two up here. You have to have thirteen votes. The law on this particular statute says if a commissioner says that he's not voting because of this conflict of interest under that statute, then you drop that number down. So, if there'd be one, you would only have twenty-three commissioners. If you have two that would exclude themselves, then you would only have twenty-two commissioners. And where that would make a difference, a majority of twenty-two would only be twelve as opposed to thirteen. So, there is that difference too.
And you, and excuse me, I think you also would have to acknowledge you're abstaining for cause to signify that, that you're making yourself ineligible.
Yes, you have to be clear that that's what you're doing, because like, for example, if you passed, then it wouldn't apply. You have to say that I am abstaining for cause because the statute says I can't vote. At that point in time, then the number goes down.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Mayor Vindal, recognize Mayor Vindal. I've never recognized him before, Mayor Vindal.
I'm not very recognizable. I agree fully with what Dan had said, and I think I appreciate you covering that tonight. It helps me. And I understand what previously Dan said in the meeting tomorrow, that any action we could take would require sixteen votes to pass, and it actually requires sixteen votes to spin the rules. And so, that's important, that if you can come tomorrow, they should come. The intent right now is to have a forum here and pass the resolution on first reading and to deal with it next Thursday night at our regular schedule meeting. And right, I was, Dan and I talked about this tonight. We had a disagreement about whether this was a regular reading, and I respect his opinion, and therefore, we did not try to pass this bill tonight with sixteen votes, and that's, those of you that thought we were going to handle it, but I respect Dan's opinion, and I always find him to be correct most of the time, but that doesn't mean that I don't state my own case. But if you can come tomorrow, please, it's not a convenient time. We understand that. I mentioned that I called that meeting as a fail-safe, so we could act on this before or as soon as we possibly could. So, it's, if we have thirteen show up tomorrow, then it will have served its purpose. If we have a sufficient number for you to consider to be able to pass this tomorrow, then it will serve its purpose. But it would be nothing, at the minimum, we will pass it on first reading. So, I will try to, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them now. I'm sorry. No, go ahead, please, please.
Commissioner Locke, as this button pressed.
I'd like to know what.
I'd like to know what changed from maybe eight years ago? We voted on actual resolutions in the work session.
I don't recall that myself. And I think it's terminology of work session. This was started as an informal work session where you could come. And it was never intended to be a first reading or anything like that. I don't recall that.
Which suspended the rules before and voted. I forget what resolution was.
I don't know, but I agree with Dan that we cannot.
Well, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's fine.
I agree with him. We can't, in work session, we cannot. And it's terminology, I've misinterpreted. And Dan, as I say, I accept Dan's opinion. That my interpretation was is that we actually had a regular meeting to handle a resolution. And as I say, I respect his opinion. He wants to be recognized. And I can't recognize anybody in the chair yet.
You say recognition, turn to you.
I don't have any say, anything to say in response to what Mike said. I was just going to clarify one additional point. If you consider yourself to be one that you would have to abstain tomorrow due to cause, you need to be here to do that because if you don't, you don't get the, the people that want this to pass don't get the benefit of you not being counted. Does that make sense?
That's important. That's important. We know that.
Anyone else seeking recognition?
I'm through unless somebody else.
No, no, you, I think, I think we could go around and remember everybody has one, one question for the mayor.
I don't get many opportunities, folks. Go ahead and take them.
Anyone else seek recognition? Without objection, commission stands adjourned until 10:00 AM Friday, August ninth. That's tomorrow. 10:00 AM tomorrow.